Monday, November 25th, 2019, regular meeting of Peter Township Council order. Mr. Lauer, can you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Merrill.
President.
Mr. Steigl.
Here.
Mr. Cozer.
Here.
Mr. Burquist.
Here.
Mr. Ball.
President.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Stand up, pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda this evening is a public hearing on the 2020 budgeted capital improvement program. Slower.
Each year, council and the township staff invest in several time and effort into developing a budget that prudently allocates limited financial resources in a manner designed to best meet the needs and desires of the community. The budget process is defined and guided by the Peter Township Home Rule Charter. It reflects long-term planning initiatives such as the Comprehensive Land Use Plan and the Comprehensive Recreation Plan. It draws input from standing advisory boards, township staff, and residents, but most importantly, it contains the insight and contributions of the Peter Township Council, which are expressed not only in our budget workshops, but throughout the year. Normally, the annual budgeting process is an interim process that reflects incremental changes in sources of revenue and program initiatives. On occasion, however, municipal budgets encompass programs or projects that fundamentally change the character of a community. This is one of those years for Peter Township. For the past year, the community's collective attention has been focused on the new Peter's Township High School construction project. The township has been supporting the school district's effort in numerous ways. It's the ability of the township and the school district to work together for the benefit of the community that has long been a competitive advantage for Peter's Township. In the upcoming year, Peter's Township will undertake three projects on the former Rolling Hills Country Club property that will take center stage. In 2019, Peter's Township completed the first phase of constructing Rolling Hills Drive. This project, which includes the realignment of Center Church Road, creates a public roadway that will serve as the entrance to the Peter's Township High School in Rolling Hills Park. In 2020, Rolling Hills Drive will be extended to East McMurray Road. As part of this project, East McMurray Road will be realigned and a signalized intersection will be created. It is worth noting that a significant portion of this project's cost is being funded not with local tax dollars, but with traffic impact fees paid by developers and builders, as well as a $500,000 grant from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development. The second project will be the Phase One construction of Rolling Hills Park. Efforts are currently underway to translate the vision for the park contained in the Rolling Hills Master Plan into engineered drawings. The first phase will concentrate on developing the infrastructure needed to support future park development. This project, when completed, will link Arrowhead Trail and provide picnic shelters supported by parking and restrooms. These shelters will surround what is known as the Great Lawn. Finally, the preliminary budget includes an appropriation of funds for the purpose of designing a community aquatic center. The request for proposals for this project will be issued in the spring after bids have been opened for the Rolling Hills Park Phase One Construction Project. It should be noted that a commitment to design the aquatics facility is separate from a future decision as to whether the project will be built. So what you see on the screen is a summary of the Peter's Township budget, and this encompasses revenues and expenditures across all funds. As you can see, the total amount of revenues for this year is $23,068,000, where the expenditures are $33,313,000. A large part of that differential relates to the bond issue that was funded in 2019, and will fund a number of projects inside of Rolling Hills Park, as well as the acquisition of land for a future fire station and, this year, a fire engine. The ability of municipal governments to achieve its goals is determined by its capacity to raise funds. In 2020, it is estimated that 58% of Peter's Township's total revenue of $23,068,000 will be derived from taxes. The township anticipates collecting $13,462,520 in tax revenues. The taxes levied, earned income tax and the real estate tax, are the most significant. The earned income tax is a 1.5% tax levied against the wages earned by Peter's Township residents and non-residents alike. In 2020, earned income tax will account for $6,320,340, or 47% of the taxes levied for the general government. The real estate tax is a tax levied against the assessed valuation of real estate property located in the township. The responsibility for establishing the assessed value of properties rests with Washington County. In November 2019, Washington County certified the aggregate assessed value of all properties in Peter's Township to be $3,197,277,120. This is an increase of $37,550,000 over the 2019 assessed value. The budgeted receipts for real estate assumes the property tax mileage of 1.622 mils, and this is the same mileage rate as levied in 2019. In 2020, real estate taxes will account for $5,83,780, or 38% of overall taxes levied. The one thing that I would point out to council was that when we discussed the bond issue, we discussed that there was the possibility of a needed tax increase to be able to fund the slightly over $300,000 in incremental expenses associated with that. That is not necessary this year, and it's largely due to savings that we realized in terms of our 2019 spending plan, but in addition to that, we realized revenues in excess of that which was budgeted for, and probably most significant of which is the deed transfer tax, which this year revenues will be over $2,100,000, and revenues from that tax have never been over $2 million before. The real estate transfer tax is a tax levied on the value of real estate transferred in Peter's Township. The tax levy is a 1% of the value transferred. This tax is collected by the Washington County Recorder of Deeds, who is charged a 2% collection fee. In 2020, revenues from the deed transfer tax are estimated to be $1,600,000, and as I indicated, this year it was well in excess of that, but what our practice has always been here is to be very conservative, and this particular source of revenue is subject to fluctuation based upon activity in the housing market. In 2020, the township estimates the revenues from non-tax sources will equal $9,606,275, which is 40% of total revenue. Charges for services equal $2,973,625, or 31% of all non-tax revenue. It is the township's policy, whenever possible, to charge fees for specialized services. The township's goal is to structure those fees in a manner to cover the total cost of providing the related services. Fees are charged for the collection and disposal of solid waste and recyclables. Zoning and building permit fees offset the cost of municipal services associated with development activities. The cost of recreation activities are largely covered by program fees. We are currently in the process of doing a comprehensive review of our fee schedule with the intent of modifying the fee schedule as part of the approval process for the budget. Peter's Township anticipates grants totaling $3,552,027, or 37% of the township's total non-tax revenue. An important ongoing source of grant funds for Peter's Township is the Peter's Township Liquid Fuels Program. Under the program, the state provides individual municipalities with a portion of the monies derived from the imposition of a statewide gasoline tax. In 2012, Peter's Township began receiving a grant allocation under the Natural Gas Impact Fee Program. In 2020, revenues from this source are budgeted at $510,000. The township receives funds under the Foreign Fire and Foreign Casualty Insurance Programs as well. Funds received under the Foreign Fire Fund Program are mandated by the State of Pennsylvania to be turned over to the Peter's Township Volunteer Fire Company Relief Association. These funds are primarily utilized by the Relief Association to acquire and maintain firefighting equipment and personal protection gear. The Foreign Casualty Insurance Program provides funds to help offset pension costs. The amount received does not cover all the costs associated with employees' pension. The difference is made up by the general funds and employees' contribution to the plans. The budget anticipates receiving categorical grants for a variety of projects, including park and intersection improvements. Noteworthy categorical grants include $500,000 for the construction of Rolling Hills Drive and $165,000 for trail construction in Rolling Hills Park. Within the chart of accounts promulgated by the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development, municipalities are encouraged to group program expenses into one of four categories. These categories are general government, protection to persons and property, public works, culture and recreation. In addition to these four program areas, the budget includes expenses related to debt service and insurance and employees' benefits. The total budgeted expenses for 2020 are $33,313,425. In 2020, expenses associated with protection to persons and property account for $6,127,255, or 18% of all expenses. Programs contained in the public safety category include police services, fire services, emergency medical services, animal control, planning, zoning, and building inspection. Public works expenses in 2020 are estimated to be $11,525,424, or 35% of total expenses. A significant portion of this amount is associated with capital improvements, including the construction of Rolling Hills Drive and the resurfacing of roadways and the rehabilitation of storm sewers. Programs included in the category of culture and recreation are the Peter's Township Library, the Parks and Recreation Department, the Peter's Township Community Television. In 2020, expenditures for culture and recreation are estimated to be $8,973,772, or 27% of all expenditures. This is a significant increase than prior years as a result of the Rolling Hills Phase One Construction Project. It is within the context of these four program areas that funds are allocated. Each of the departments contained within these programs are responsible for executing various aspects of the program as a way of implementing Peter's Township's council vision for the community. The township has an express policy of maintaining a fund balance of 15% of budgeted revenues. While the 2020 fund balance conforms to this policy, there will be a significant decrease by the end of 2020. In part, this reflects the expenditure funds borrowed in 2019 to finance capital projects, including the construction of Rolling Hills Park and the acquisition of property for a new fire station. In terms of significant budget issues, they fall into two categories, and the first is personnel. There are two full-time positions anticipated in 2020 in addition to that which was provided for in 2019. In both cases, these involve transitioning work performed by part-time employees to employees with full-time status. Early in 2020, Peter's Township would be hiring an additional full-time firefighter. This will result in an equivalent reduction of hours paid to part-time employees or full-time employees who have worked on an overtime basis. In addition, the township will be transitioning to part-time position in the Peter's Township Public Access Program to full-time status. This position will provide additional support to the public access operation as well as other departments. The other significant budget issues always surround capital projects, and the 2020 budget contains an ambitious capital improvement program. Expenditures for capital projects account for $15,208,574 and account for 46% of all expenditures. In the report that has been issued, there is a table that provides a comprehensive listing of all of the projects that are to be funded under the capital improvement program. Again, the most significant of these are both occurring within the Recreation Department and the Public Works Department. That summarizes where I believe we are at this point on the 2020 budget.
Thank you, Mr. Lauer. Any member of council have any questions?
Just a clarification. You talked about looking at the fee structure for the different departments. Does the number that you show on this example reflect what you anticipate it will be, or will that go up potentially based on what your investigation and changes might be?
It may, and our intention is over the next week or two to take a look at that. You know, one of the things that we do know is that certain fees that are significant sources of revenue, quite frankly, are probably set at the right level right now. The fact of the matter is our building inspection fees this year have more than offset the cost of the building inspection department, but there are other small fees that we want to look at to make sure that we increase them incrementally rather than to have dramatic increases in those fees.
Thank you.
Does any member of the audience that has any questions or comments with regard to next year's budget?
Ron Books, 855 Bebaut Road. Mr. Lauer, I noticed that this year, the projected income versus projected expenditures is at an all-time high, representing 45% of income. The concern I have is not about the year 2020. You've already mentioned that there won't be a tax increase, but what I am concerned about is the following years. What will be happening then? How far out are you able to crystal ball, and what does the future hold for taxpayers of Peter's Township?
Well, as I indicated, the reason why you see this large discrepancy between the amount of revenues that are coming in and the amount of expenditures next year has principally to do with the fact that we borrowed funds and we're going to spend those funds down next year. I can't answer the question as to whether or not there'll be a tax increase in 2021. A lot of that has to do with a program that will be developed as we go through this same type of process next year, and what is the program in terms of what council wishes to do in terms of implementing the wishes and desires of the people of the community. So to get beyond this year, I can't tell you that. I can tell you this, where it always starts with the same charge, is try to be able to put together the budget in a way that there isn't a tax increase, and we've been able successfully do that this year.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience with a comment or question?
Ann Chaner, 123 Robin Hood Lane. I don't know if this is appropriate for this public hearing, but, you know, I attended the budget meeting, and we're not allowed to make comment there, but I wanted to ask if, because when the gentleman was talking about the buildings in the park, I want to know if there was any consideration given to sustainability? In other words, using like solar panels to heat some of the buildings, or, you know, if there was any effort or comment or discussion with the builders in regards to that? Now, you know, it may, or it may not, I'm not sure, cause, you know, an increase initially, but I think in the long run it would pay off if some consideration was given to that. So, Mr. Lauer, was that given consideration?
The only buildings that are planned, or structures planned for the initial phase of the park are picnic shelters, a small restroom, and a public works garage that is only ever heated to minimal heating. Where I would agree with you is that if, in fact, the township moves ahead with large buildings on that site, which would include the swimming pool as well as the tennis center, I think at that point in time that is something that needs to be looked at.
Do you ordinarily look at that? I mean...
Like, what we always look at is designing buildings that are energy efficient. I can't tell you that we have looked at solar panels or geothermal or any of those things up to this point.
What about for the new fire station?
Well, we're not designing the new fire station, so I guess that question will come up when we're in the process of doing that.
So I have to make it then? Is that what you're saying? I have to make the comment then?
But there is not money in the budget to design the fire station this year.
Well, okay, so, and I just wanted to make a general comment, too, and this might maybe be for the other meeting tonight, but forgive me, because I don't know. I think that after sitting in that budget meeting and watching the fire chief show that video, I mean, that was almost like you couldn't sleep that night, okay, watching that one fire of that house.
Obviously burned.
Yes, so I say, if it's public safety versus pool, throw the money to public safety. You know, I think we need to do everything we need to do to protect our citizens from such disaster. And since he said there were all those new homes down in the Venetia area, I think that it's noteworthy that we give that our best consideration over pool development. Thank you.
Thank you, Chaner. Anyone else in the audience wish to speak? Seeing no one, can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
No move.
Motion of the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Seven zero, Mr. Lauer. We'll close the public hearing at this point. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of November 11th, 2019. No move.
No.
Motion of the second, a discussion.
Two things, Mr. Chairman. In the body of the minutes, one of the residents who spoke, her name was misstated, it's Maureen Jones. I sent Mr. Lauer a note so they could correct that. Second, I just wanted to clarify a point related to my statement under PVE about the job description for the patrolman, so that there's not a misconception that I don't think a patrolman should ever take charge. My point was basically to be that, of course, they need to take charge if a corporal has to lead, but if it happens to be a shift when there's another higher ranking officer on duty, to me, it would seem appropriate for that. So, just to clarify, I obviously stated there should not be a time, well, that's not exactly what I meant. So, if you'd correct it so that it makes a little more sense, I'd appreciate it.
I'll amend my motion with those corrections. May we have a motion in the second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Seven zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item is special reports. I don't see Representative Mahalik yet.
I don't see Representative Mahalik.
I'll double check here. It's not arrived yet. Okay, well, then we'll move on to audience comments. This is the portion of the meeting where any member of the audience can speak for up to five minutes on a non-agenda item. Any member of the audience who wishes to speak?
Dave Elson, 121 Brookdale Circle. I just wanted to get an update on the demolition at 214 Valley Brook Road.
Well, we just received a decision earlier today.
Oh, yeah?
Washington County Court of Common Peace denied the property owner's request for injunction, so at this point, we're back on schedule.
Moving forward with it.
Yes.
Just wanted to make sure we're still...
An act of a project. So injunction was denied?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Anyone else wish to speak?
Ron Books, 855 Bebaut. I just want to reaffirm what this young lady said earlier concerning the fire station. Under the circumstances, I was very moved by the video. That concerns me a great deal, and I would hope that that would get a very positive, strong consideration. The last thing I need to have happen in our community is for a young family to lose their lives second degree to that fire. I almost believe that those buildings that they're constructing, based upon that video, somehow violates some sort of right, human right to safety. I mean, God bless the people that are buying those homes. Four minutes to get out of the house before you die? What happens if you're elderly? I guess you're toast. Thank you. Please consider the fire station a priority.
Thank you, Mr. Books. Anyone else wish to speak?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Trent Dennison. I live at 541 Center Church. Peter's Township Fire Department just completed their seven-week-long Citizens' Fire Academy, of which I'm a proud graduate. Citizens' Fire Academy certainly opened my eyes as to what our fire department does. It's no longer just getting cats out of trees. I'd like to suggest that council give the fire department anything they want. The chiefs don't just manage putting out fires. They have worked in every aspect in the field, as well as associated fields, for instance, EMS, EMT, paramedics. They've been trained and certified by numerous state agencies. They know what is needed. There is obviously some business acumen present. Look how much money was saved on the new truck. If people had to extinguish their own burning home, would they know how to do it safely and effectively? I think not. Would people know that due to new construction materials and methods, you now have, as you said, three minutes to get out of a burning building versus 15 minutes or more in older structures? We know that now. Peter's Township is facing huge expansion in the future. No matter how dedicated people are, do they know how big a ladder truck would be needed to fight a fire and evacuate the waters of Peters? What construction is coming into the township? Low-income, senior housing, a town square? Who is going to know how to respond to a fire or mass casualty emergency event? Who is going to respond quickly, safely, and effectively to a chlorine gas leak at the aquatic center? A conflagration at a fracking well pad? Who's going to support medical emergency response on a bike trail? Let's not forget about safety checks on seniors' homes, child car seat installation, community outreach programs, commercial property fire safety inspections, CPR, AED instruction, and citizen certification. We're lucky to have Peter's Township and North Serbene Departments working together so closely. The savings in costs and response time are measurable, yes, but immeasurable in lives saved. No, not luck. The fine leadership of Chiefs McGoughlin and Grimm, Deputy Chief Caputo, paid and volunteer firefighters has also helped. Some fire departments don't even talk to each other. I'm glad I live here in Peters instead of the best place to raise a family. Again, give the chiefs what they want. They know what equipment and staff they need to do the job they know needs to be done. Don't pay a consultant, ask a chief. Investment in a third fire station is a no-brainer. As was fleshed out in the November 11th council meeting, taxes on new residential, commercial, and retail construction will more than pay for it. And don't forget about the firefighters who do this work at the drop of a hat. They take that call at 3:00 a.m. Does everybody know about the increased rates of cancer, heart attacks, and higher suicide rates than police and EMS combined? We know about that, too. It's way more than getting cats out of trees. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Anyone else wish to speak? Seeing no one, we see that Representative Mahalik has arrived, so we will go back to special reports. Presentation by State Representative Natalie Mahalik.
I was getting grilled by a pack of Cub Scouts. I just wanted to officially present Peter's Township with a check for $500,000 from the state for the multimodal grant, and this is to help with the...
Turn it the other way. Turn it the other way, laid on the table, so that our...
And I apparently have to sign it. Luckily, I had Sharpie in my bag.
I was going to say, yeah, it's on side. You're not leaving till you sign.
You're not leaving until you sign it. Let me hold that for you.
Thank you. And this is in...
It's not gonna go through the card reader, is it?
I know. This is a testament to all the work that's being done on the township level to help with the new development that's been going on, and the access road is gonna make it infinitely better over there. So, we were more than happy to give this money to the township to help with that access road. I think it's about half of what was needed, if I'm not mistaken. So, congratulations to all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Representative Mahalek, don't leave. Don't leave.
Do you want this back, or can I give this?
It's all yours. I don't think it's...
You can send it down.
Probably has to be posted back tomorrow.
Don't you guys take this, though? Once to the township.
I do want to point something out, and, and that is, you know, the fact of the matter is, on many grants that we, that we make application for, they're very structured, and those are reviewed by the, you know, employees of the state of Pennsylvania, and they follow a process, and if you qualify, you receive those grants. But that is not the case with regard to the Multimodal Transportation Fund, and where Mr. Troworski has done a really skilled job in terms of drafting that application. The fact of the matter is, the only reason that Peters Township is a receipt of this grant is the efforts of Representative Mahalek. And without that advocacy from our state representatives, that money would not be available to you. The other thing is that I, that I would like to also point out is that we were down at the ceremony for honoring the veteran down in Old Oak Road, and Representative Mahalek came up to me and said, "Hey, I've got a private group who's interested in making a donation. Do you have someplace where that donation could be put to good use?" And as a result of that contribution, there's a piece of training apparatus that the volunteer fire company has been able to acquire that they've wanted for a few years and haven't been able to justify that expense on their own. And the thing that I find so interesting about Representative Mahalek is she thanked me for finding a place for her to give money, which is not normally what I'm used to. I'm used to having to thank someone else. So, she's really done a, an amazing benefit for the township. And one of the things that I would suggest, we have representatives from the school district here as well, because that $500,000 check is going to reduce the overall expense of this project, and part of that expense is borne by the school district and this partnership we have. And what I would, if we could, is we could get a picture with, with you, Mr. Kozier, or representative of the school district. That would be great.
Here, I thought that Dr. French and Mr. McMurray came tonight because they didn't have a meeting, didn't know what else to do.
Thank you. Sorry to disrupt the meeting.
Anytime you bring $500,000.
Yeah, a half million dollars.
Thank you.
All right. Come on, Eric.
Did I use that, Eric?
Ah, one's got pretty cool.
All right. I hardly ever get our state representatives.
But one of me likes to talk.
Nice smile.
Thank you.
That's how they do it.
First, it's settlement agreement with regard to the substantive validity challenged to Section 440-708B of Peters Township Code of Ordinance.
So, as per council's instruction, we have reached a settlement agreement with NSF Pipe concerning their challenge to our zoning ordinance as it relates to restrictions on signs. Under the provisions of that, of that settlement agreement, NSF Pipe is going to be replacing this monument sign with a, an electronic sign that would be full color. But in addition to that, this sign that is made of stone that's up on the property will be removed so that they'll no longer have a sign on their property that doesn't conform to our ordinances. It's my recommendation that Peters Township Council authorize the appropriate township official to execute a settlement agreement with NSF Life. NSF Life has already executed that agreement.
No move, Chairman. Motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Seven zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item is change order number one, Robin Hood Drive cured and placed pipe storm sewer project.
Yeah, as a result of some unforeseen conditions, the scope of the work changed on the Robin Hood Lane cured and placed storm sewer project. A receiving pit that was not part of the original scope of work was required to be constructed, and then existing conditions in the pipe sections were no longer suitable for lining. The result is a reduction in the total project cost of $8,185, but before anybody celebrate that, what that will mean is that that portion of pipe will be in a future project where we'll have to go in and replace it. But it's my recommendation that Peters Township Council authorize the appropriate officials to execute change order one, decreasing the total project cost by $8,185 for the Robin Hood cured and placed pipe.
No move. Motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Seven zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item is approval for recording purposes of the ACG Homes Inc. Subdivision Plan Number One, as shown on drawings prepared by Keystone Surveying and Mapping, Inc., dated November 5th, 2019, for ACG Homes, Inc.
So, there is this large parcel that's, that's not gonna, this large parcel that is just, let me see if I can zoom in on it this way. Just on the other side of Shoreline Drive, and this particular parcel has had some environmental issues on it that has restricted its ability to be developed as originally intended with a series of homes. What has occurred is that along that strip, there have been three homes constructed, and what is being proposed here is to subdivide off the land upon which those three homes exist and transfer it to the homeowners association, as would have been done had, had this plan moved ahead as designed. The, the one concern I had, and quite frankly, I don't think it's a concern for the township, I just wanted to make sure that both the, the people conveying this and the people receiving it have an understanding, because there, there are taxes still owed on this property, because they haven't been paid for a number of years as a result of the fact that you can't build upon the property up above. And I'd be quite honest with you, I don't know exactly how that gets handled in this transfer, and it, like I said, it may well not be a concern for the township, but I just thought council should be aware of that. The planning commission has recommended that the subdivision be approved, and it's my recommendation that, that in fact, that it be approved. We have...
Yeah, sorry, I can address that for you. My name is Anna Baird, and I'm a resident of this community, and I've served on the homeowners association for approximately 10 years, and have been living with this project for quite some time. As it was discussed, that property was supposed to be conveyed to the homeowners association, and unfortunately, the taxes that are past due are 2013, 14, and 15 that are delinquent, resulted in a sheriff sale coming up in September. A stay was obtained that allowed for 60 days additional time to resolve this issue, at which time we engaged to get a survey to be able to partition off that portion of the land that we wanted to get to the homeowners association. The rest of the land, because of the DEP concerns and environmental restrictions and things, we really don't want to take the responsibility. There's concern about possible sea beach that would go into Chertiers Township, so the risk really outweigh any benefits that we would have, being able to have some green space. So, I do want to protect the homeowners who are on those three lots, because if those parcel comes up for sale and someone were to obtain that, that could be at risk for those homeowners. What we've been able to do in this, by getting this survey, I've worked with Washington County, who is on board. They have agreed to, in essence, move the property taxes, because the portion of land that we're talking about is less than an acre, it's like .7 acres out of approximately seven acres. So, they had their engineer essentially assuming that there's approval of this, that that lot, those, that particular, would not carry any back taxes with it. All of them would go with the rest of that, that particular parcel. The sheriff sale actually, the stay expired on Friday, last Friday. There was a sale that preceded. The past due taxes were approximately $12,000. There were about 20 people in attendance for that multiple sales and things, but nobody had any interest whatsoever in this particular property. So, my understanding is that the next step, because obviously, the taxes continue to remain unpaid, and really, there's a bit of an issue here, and I think it's, it's really as a result of a mistake that was made by the county, because the property taxes were really to be paid by the developer, McComb, who, when they had declared bankruptcy, PNC became the lien holder, they had not paid the taxes, but they did convey the property to, particularly to Gillespie ACG Homes, with the intent of them being able to get some other particular lots that they have completed. They never really wanted, ACG Homes did not want this particular strip of land, so their intent was to always just let it remain, that, you know, and those taxes probably should have been paid by PNC, but they weren't. So, they had no interest in it. We have no interest in it. Obviously, the public has had no interest in the sheriff sale. My understanding is the next step, in June of 2020, that property will come back up for a judicial sale, at which point, the tax is exonerated, and if there's any interest, then somebody can get it for the $500 administrative fees. If that doesn't happen, what the county said is they would approach the homeowners association to ask if we would want it. We still, unless something were to dramatically change, that the restrictions would be relieved from the DEP, we wouldn't have an interest. And then, my understanding is, is they would tell the township that you've got it. So, that's really sort of the history.
And we don't want it either.
Paul, this is a condominium, right?
No, no. They're patio homes.
It's planned community?
Yeah.
But the HOA jointly owns all of the land that's around. There's no individual lots.
Okay, that's, that would be my question, as to whether or not these three houses were on the original plan.
But they do. They do.
Okay.
And so, to clarify, I agree, that was one of the confusing points. But once we transfer this, there's no issues related to the open space percentages or anything like that. And then, as Ms. Baird continued to talk about this piece of property, what does potentially happen? Is the township gonna end up to be liable for this?
I don't know what happens.
If nobody buys it at judicial sale, free and clear sale, the remaining property, right, because that's what's probably sold, then it'll go into the repository, and the tax claim bureau would be the trustee, Washington County would be the trustee, and it'll sit there until someone comes in and says, "Hey, I'll give you $500 bucks, give me a deed."
Yeah.
Rough, basically.
Well, if there's issues...
We're not on the hook for it.
So, we wouldn't have any liability if something, okay. That was all I was wondering, if it kind of defaults to us. Thank you for clarifying.
I have a question, though. Those three parcels or townhomes there, whatever, patio homes, who's been paying taxes on them? Not the homeowners?
The homeowners have, because, because the structure and the land that is three foot to the edge of their, of those structures. Yes, they have been...
All right, I'll make a motion that we approve for recording purposes the ACG Homes, Inc. Subdivision Plan Number One, as shown on drawings prepared by Keystone Surveying and Mapping, Inc., dated November 5th, 2019, for ACG Homes, Inc.
I'll second. Motion is second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Seven zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item is ordinance amending the 2019 Peters Township operating budget.
At the last meeting, we had a public hearing with regard to this, and this is essentially similar to what was presented there. There are two changes that I do think are noteworthy. This is a process that we go through each year to adjust the operating budget so that the appropriations are in line with the actual spending plan. What we do, and you see that reflected in this chart here, is that we attempt to offset areas where the expenditures have exceeded the appropriation with decreases in other areas. So, as you go through, through the exhibit, you, you will see that throughout. There are two major exceptions to that, and they relate, first, to the purchase of the fire truck. Council is aware that our intention was, and our long-term plan was to acquire a fire truck next year. We have moved that up into this year. The money that was borrowed in the bond issue for it will simply be expended a few months earlier than it would have been otherwise. What has been eliminated is the money, the, the bulk of the money associated with the purchase of the fire station. That sales agreement may well be on your next council agenda, but the owner of the property has a preference to close next year and not this year. The other change that is here that differs from what was shown two weeks ago has to do with the bond issue fund. When we borrowed the funds, we chose to capitalize the interest, which means had the paying agent followed through as he should have, though this year's interest payment would not have passed through our books, that would have, the money would have been held out of the bond issue, and that money would have been, would have been paid out of there and would not have actually resulted in an appropriation needed from the township. That isn't what happened. They transferred that $100,000 to the township, and so now, we need to budget to be able to pay that interest payment on this bond issue. So, it has no real effect, but it has to show, or we're gonna have an unappropriated expenditure, and that's not permitted. So, so with that, it's my recommendation that Peters Township Council approve ordinance 846, amending the 2019 Peters Township budget.
So, did we get to 99.5?
Yes, we did.
So, it's, it's a wash?
It's a wash.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the ordinance amending the 2019 Peters Township operating budget, and I don't have the ordinance number here.
846.
846. Thank you, Mr. Burke.
I'll second. The motion is second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay. I mean, sorry.
That's okay. I thought that's...
Are you an aye or a nay?
I'm an aye.
He's an aye.
I got it.
Just the danger.
Seven zero, Mr. Lauer. Payroll and bills?
Mr. Chairman, I reviewed the payroll and bills. I find them in order and ready to be paid.
I'll second. I have a motion in the second. Any discussion?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, you went through that real quick. The letter from the GAI consultants about the proposed pipeline permit application...
This is an existing pipeline that they're going back. Sure problems with regard to landslides along this entire length of this pipeline, which extends well out of Peters Township, so...
So it's just really to follow up on some issues? And it's not in Peters per se?
It is in Peters Township, the pipeline, but it's an existing pipeline that was installed as part of the unconventional gas drilling. And like I say, what they're doing is, and I think this has to do with concerns over these collecting lines, is they're going back and making sure that the ground upon which they're located is sound. So I think this is actually a good thing.
Any member of council want to discuss any of the various committee or board reports?
I would like to make a comment that I like the view that the fire department has given us some additional information, a new way of looking at man hours and some of the other things. And the library included a new report about showing all the value to the community about borrowed items and programming. And I think this really comes, is a good way to show people the bang for the buck, so to speak, what we're getting in return for what we're spending. So I wanted to compliment them on that.
Moving on to miscellaneous, Mr. Lauer, zoning hearing board report?
It's in your docket. There was only one case. It was the case involving the pooch pit and the sound walls, and that variance was granted.
We talked about that before.
Yes.
Board attendance?
That information's been provided to council. One of the things that we're gonna be doing is taking a look to make sure that everyone's current on their taxes.
And the Rolling Hills Park Aquatic Center market study?
We talked about this briefly at the, I guess we talked about it a long time. At the workshop, I just wanted to provide you a copy of that, and in doing so, in essence, making it available to the public. I could tell you, there's still a lot of interest in the pool, and as I sat down tonight at Ferraris to have dinner, there was a couple behind me talking about their interest in the pool. So I think the community's talking a lot about it, so...
Mr. Lauer, related to that, I sent you an email. The copy that I have in my document does not have the page that talks about the probability. Is that going to be put on the document, on the website, so people can see? Because the survey, campus was kind enough to clarify predictability or probability of what, just because you said would do it, will you normally do it?
Yeah.
And I think that's an important piece of information.
And I apologize for it not being in there, because what you got was the iteration right before that. And quite frankly, the reason why it's in the report, it was at my request, because I didn't understand the methodology, and they were kind of providing that.
Was it anything nasty?
Yeah. I have one other miscellaneous item that you should know about is that I had...
There we go, all right. I wonder where this is coming from.
I had the chance to travel with Chief Grimes and Captain Ford...
Did they speak?
To... We got there quicker than it would have been had I been driving. Had a chance to go to Harrisburg and meet with the representatives from the commission that handles accreditation for police departments. And it was announced at that meeting that, in fact, Peters Township had met that criteria. But even beyond that, that the reviewers were overwhelming in their support of the department in that they do many accreditation processes, but seldom do they ever go into a community and at that first iteration of review, that it'd be so smooth and so complete. And I think we have a lot to be proud of in terms of their work. I don't want to steal their thunder, because, and the first meeting in January, representatives from the commission will be here to make that presentation to the township. And again, I think it's something that the community should be very proud of.
Anything any member of council wants to see on the next agenda? Have an executive session tonight?
Yeah, brief executive session.
I have requests to have an executive session for legal, to ask for a legal question.
Anybody else have anything for good of the order? We are adjourned. Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.